My, my mic isn't on yet, so, all right. All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our council meeting on January thirty first. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
And Mr. Foyce?
Here. All right, please join me in a moment of silence. Our pledge this evening is going to be led by City Clerk Kelly Feltham.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, can I get a motion for the agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor, per se.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two work session as proposed, and the minutes of the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regular session as proposed.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please. Roll, sorry, voice vote, I'll get it someday. Voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries, all right. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and the addition of one A one, uh, with the amounts of, sorry, I moved it. For January twenty-first, uh, twenty twenty-two, one million, six hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and one cent. And January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, three million, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-four cents.
Second.
Okay. Voice vote again, right? Roll call, please, Madam.
Uh, Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes. And I see that we have two appointments. Melissa Tobin, uh, to the position of the EMS Administrative Assistant in the Fire Department, and Michael Lott, uh, to Garage Mechanic in the Public Works Division. Either of you here this evening? No? Well, anyway, thank you, welcome to the city of Waterloo, appreciate your service, thanks. All right, first up, we have a discussion of the Laporte Road construction reconstruction, Jamie?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, um, I have ACOM here tonight to give you a presentation on Laporte Road, um, and what we're looking at for the design between Shawless and on the south, and Hawthorne on the north. And, uh, if you have comments, questions, please let us know. Michelle?
Yeah, thank you, I'm looking forward to working on this project with you, hopefully you guys can hear me pretty well. Um, so, today, we're gonna talk about the corridor and kinda where we started as far as the existing conditions, the proposed improvements, the traffic study that we completed, funding, and then the project schedule. Um, oh, sorry, I would also like to let you know that you can interrupt at any time to ask questions, because it makes it a lot easier than trying to flip back and get back to where we were. So, definitely do not hesitate to ask questions as we go. So, for those of you that don't know, the project limits go from about the two eighteen slip ramp that's on the north end, all the way down to Shawless where the, um, future roundabout is, as part of the Shawless and Laporte roundabout. It's, um, probably previously called Hess, so that is going to be the south limits, and it's gonna go underneath, um, Highway twenty, along the mall, and, um, San Martin. The existing roadway is actually a, uh, minor arterial and a collector. So the minor arterial is actually from San Martin south, and the collector is going to the north. And just so you guys that haven't had much experience with traffic, the minor arterial is actually the heavier, more, um, frequent roadway, and the collector is the lower volume. The typical cross-section we're gonna review is basically the, um, the urban setting, um, that we have on the north end, and the rural on the south, and how we're gonna convert it. We've got three existing signals, um, and a hawk signal at the existing fire station. We've got no pedestrian accommodations currently, or bicycle accommodations, and we are, we have a frontage road from Cornwall to Bron, uh, Byron. We've got, uh, here you can see some pedestrians and our best bicyclists along the corridor, and then you also see the, uh, rural section that's out by the KOA. We also have the San Martin intersection, and you also can see the utilities that we have along this corridor. You can see a number of telephone poles, um, we have a pedestrian here in the upper, uh, right-hand corner. And so, some of the other additional corridor, um, considerations is the drainage. We have a major drainage crossing at the Crossroads Creek, and there's actually a pretty good flood, um, way that goes through there. Uh, we have utilities, we've got, um, Mid-America, uh, Waterloo Waterworks, uh, sanitary sewer, fiber, uh, electric, all that stuff, so. And then the other thing we have to consider when we're reconstructing is the environmental. So, here you can see the, um, existing floodway, which is in the lower-left picture, and the floodway is actually the black hatched area, and the blue line is kinda hard to see, but that's actually the floodway boundary for the hundred year. On the other side, you can see the environmental wetlands in that same general area as the channel. And then there's some additional wetlands on the south side of twenty, and then at the outlet of the Bamboo Lake. So, that's kind of a existing corridor, are there any questions about the existing conditions? Great, so the project goals, this is kinda what, um, spurs kind of are, how we develop the project. So, I don't necessarily read all of them, but basically, we're definitely gonna make some improvements to the efficiency of the roadway, provide accommodations for businesses, pedestrians, transit users, uh, make general enhancements to the corridor as well as part of this project. So, here we have a typical cross, cross-section, this is actually what we're proposing to do from Shawless at the roundabout, all the way up to Grim Street, and Grim is the, uh, it goes San Martin, BOP, and Grim for those. Um, and so that's the, kinda the south end of where the mall is. It's gonna be primarily a two-lane corridor, we are gonna have left turn lanes at any of the identified intersections, such as like the Lost Island, um, entrance for their staff, we're gonna have a turn lane for the KOA, and a number of other identified areas. Here you can see the three-lane section, and that's gonna be in two different sections. So it's actually gonna be from Grim up to BOP, and then skipping over the BOP to Ridgeway section, and then it goes to Ridgeway to Highway, uh, two eighteen slip ramp. So, that's what we're proposing in those two sections, and you can see it's like out of two-way left center turn lane. Oh, and then the other thing I should have mentioned, sorry, is we are gonna have a recreational trail along the west side of the road, and that's gonna run the entire stretch from Shawless all the way up to the two eighteen slip ramp. So, there is going to be a brand-new recreational trail that'll tie into that Shawless trail. Um, and we're making plans for tying it into like the downtown trail system as well, to make that connection for an overall plan. However, that full connection into downtown won't necessarily be part of this project, but we're trying to identify potential opportunities to make that connection in the future.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
One of the questions that I had is, is looking at this, um, you're talking about from Ri-Ridgeway South. Now that Ridgeway North, is that what you're talking about, as far as tying into downtown Waterloo eventually?
So the recreational trail is, cause what I was talking about with the tie-in to downtown, and so, we are gonna put the recreational trail in all the way up to the slip ramp at two eighteen, but that connection to the, uh, two eighteen recreational trail, which also ties into downtown, um, we don't have a clear connection quite yet for that.
Well, I guess my question is, is the roadway itself, you go from Ridgeway and head north, that area there where, um, I believe it's Cadillac and all of those businesses are, those roads are terrible in that area, is that part of the project also?
Yeah, so we're gonna redo all of the intersections, yes, as part of that project, yes. Yep, so, yeah, the whole roadway will eventually be reconstructed, so that's kinda, this is the groundwork for all of that.
All right, thank you.
So, and then you can see the five-lane typical cross-section, this is the highest, um, volumed area, and this is from BOP to Ridgway, so that includes that San Martin intersection. So, this is the five-lane section. So, as part of this project, there will be some right-of-way impacts due to the, um, improvements with recreational trails, sidewalks, things like that. We are trying to minimize them as much as possible, we do know that that impacts businesses and such. Um, you can see here that these are not all of the properties, but these are the, probably the maj, um, the major, I shouldn't say major, because we are trying to minimize them, and most of them are basically just strip takings. You can kinda see the yellow highlight, and then the, um, blue coloring, um, the blue would be more right-of-way, and then the yellow is more of a temporary easement. So, we are trying to minimize our impacts as much as possible, but you can see here, some of these impacts, uh, some of these improvements do impact properties.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could you explain what we're looking at? I can't read this, I don't have it on my screen.
Sorry, I, can you guys see the mouse?
I, I, I just can't see what streets you're talking about here, and what, what businesses we're looking at.
Okay, so the one on the lower-left, that's, um, Dick Withem, so the San Martin, or, sorry, uh, Laporte Road is on the left side of the picture, because they're on the east side of the road. And so the yellow strip is just a temporary impact to them in order to construct the roadway. The one in the middle is the CVS property, and you can see that's the recreational trail. Um, so the roadway is actually, um, on the, uh, right side of the building. And then the lower, uh, right picture is McDonald's, and so then the road is on the left side of McDonald's, and that's actually, um, right-of-way needed for the sidewalk that will be recon- are constructed there. Sorry, it's hard to get all the pictures in there, but these are just some of the examples of, um, some of the right-of-way that we would, so. And we, as we proceed into final design, we will look at ways to minimize that, whether it's reducing the offset from, uh, sidewalk to back a curb, et cetera. However, when we try to establish this preliminary design, we do try to maximize safety in keeping that distance a safe distance, and then it also provides snow storage when plowing roads and stuff, so, and it doesn't all end up on the sidewalk.
Mr. Mayor. Are we able to get a copy of this email to us?
Yes, I absolutely can.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, we have, um, in addition to right-of-way impacts, we also try to identify and, um, improve access management and our control, so we try to make safety improvements. So the intersection in the middle of this picture is actually Mitchell, and there's a number of intersections here that are very close, and in order to prove safety, we have identified these as potential closures. Obviously, we will have to work with these property owners, um, prior to closing them, and that would be something that we would negotiate with them and work through with them. In addition, you can kinda see, um, in this area, we are eliminating the frontage road. So, and it, as part of that, it's, it's kind of a redundancy to have that frontage road right along Laporte. And so, in removing that, it reduces the cost to reconstruct, it also reduces maintenance, so. And then it will identify and create, uh, access points along there versus the drop curb that's currently there. Sorry, if there's any questions, ask, but, then the enhancements, so this is kinda the fun part. This is the bicycle trails, pedestrian, um, improvements, the sidewalks, um, the transit accommodations, landscaping, and then the other discussion we're having is the overhead-to-underground conversion. Here you can see some of the enhancements, uh, we have, we have very similar enhancements to University Avenue. We've got an intersection marker with some ornamental trees planted, proposed. Here you see a gateway feature, this is actually proposed on San Martin as you approach the corridor, and it's as you get off of two eighteen. And here is a good picture of how the overhead-to-underground conversion really improves this area. So, I don't know how well you can tell, and I don't know if they can zoom in on TV, but, um, the existing picture is off to, yep, right there, and that really shows how the existing corridor looks really cluttered with all the overhead, um, lines. And then the other picture really shows how, even though there's been no other changes, how much better the corridor looks, um, and the improvements that it makes.
One of the things I just wanted to point out, the enhancements here may not be as much as what we've seen on, um, University Avenue, but doing this is a huge enhancement to the businesses along there, so keep that in mind. You may not see the busi-big physical infrastructure like we did on University, but something like this, I think has a much bigger impact than, than trees or, or other things that we could be doing, so. This'll be, would be considered part of the enhancements of the corridor.
Mr. Mayor. So, Michelle and Jamie, then, we, we already know, or we're in, talking with Mid-America about doing all of this, and it won't be, it's not gonna, what's our cost, then we're doing all of that, then?
So it, there are potential costs with this, but that is something that we're gonna negotiate with Mid-America. They've thrown out some estimates, but, um, through the negotiation process and the amount of impacts that we have in the corridor, so there's gonna be impacts that they would have to do no matter what. So if we have a recreational trail that conflicts with these poles, which they do, they would have to relocate those poles at their cost, no matter what. And so we would use that as part of our negotiations, so that way the city wouldn't take the full brunt of the relocation to underground. And so, those are costs they're gonna have, no matter what.
Yeah, it's something we're in the process of talking to them about, we just don't have a hard number yet.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, and we have talked with the stakeholders along the corridor, and the stakeholders have all been very supportive of how much this will improve the corridor. And there, um, will potentially be some impacts to the businesses along the corridor that have overhead power and would have to convert their power to underground, so, that's a potential as well. But, as you can see, there's a huge drastic improvement to this corridor with that. You can see here the enhancements, I might kinda go fast, I've got a little bit of time, but, um, I wanna make sure I keep my schedule, but you can see here, we're doing some street trees throughout the corridor. We're also going to be doing, um, similar, um, median improvements where anytime we have less than seven feet, um, for mowers, we will have, um, the colored concrete in order to keep safety in those medians. You can see here, we've got some ornamental trees at the, uh, intersection of Highway twenty. We also will be doing some under-deck improvements for lighting, that's also come out of the stakeholder, um, meetings, is they want to make sure that that's not kind of a dark, um, area. You can see here, continued street trees, there's some screening along the backside of the property. Um, again, you can start to see where we're gonna start doing the overhead-to-underground conversion. So you can see here, the red line is actually the overhead-to-underground conversion. So, it's gonna start here on the south end, and as we progress forward, you can see it on the north end. At the intersection of San Martin, we're gonna do enhanced crosswalks similar to University Avenue, and this is also where those gate features are, gateway features are along, um, San Martin as you get off of two eighteen, or go on to two eighteen. Again, you can see the trails and overhead-to-underground enhancements. And then, again, we will have another intersection marker at the intersection of Mitchell, getting off of that two eighteen corridor. Here you can see the slip ramp. Any questions about enhancements as of yet? Okay. Fun part, traffic engineering, crash studies, so we've actually have about a hundred and thirty-three crashes in a five-year period. Um, the more, majority of the crashes happen at Mitchell and San Martin. Those two intersections are above the statewide average and are considered, um, intersections that would benefit from safety improvements. We have, um, as part of our traffic study, we do, um, we did study, sorry, uh, nineteen intersections, and all of them, with the exception of San Martin, had, um, high level of service, and that's what LOS is, level of service, and San Martin had a level of service D. So, for those of you, um, level of service, we typically target C as kind of our good forecasting, so we project our, um, traffic volumes out, and C is kinda what we target. Level of service D is considered, um, acceptable in peak periods for a higher volume, similar to like, um, a San Martin Avenue. However, we do like to target a C because that is a safer air, um, design. So we've got, um, our future traffic conditions were for twenty forty-five, so when you hear me talk about twenty forty-five, it's because I, we've forecasted that traffic growth, and then when we analyze, um, oh, sorry, and I should say that we do include, um, a factor, when we did our traffic study, it was shortly after COVID started to open back up. However, we did, um, an analysis to notice that we were still low compared to pre-COVID and after COVID. So that was up due to that, and then we also included the, um, traffic impact study data for the theme park. And so, then we analyzed the no-build situation, which is basically if we would build it back the way it is today, keeping the frontage road, keeping San Martin the same way, keeping the same lane configurations. And then we have the build, which is the improvements we are presenting today. So here you can see the existing, so this is the way it is today, if you would go out there in peak, um, traffic today, it would take you, your arterial speeds would be anywhere from eleven to, uh, twenty-four, depending on AM and PM and which direction you're going. So for the no-build, we actually would have a lower arterial speed, you're actually going to drop those down with those future projected traffic volumes, and you'll have a, uh, arterial speed of nine to fifteen, depending on your AM and PM and directional traffic. So, this actually increases delays and decreases arterial speeds compared to the way it is today. So, then we have our build analysis, and that's what we're proposing to move forward with as part of our corridor study. And here you can see that we reduce delays and we increase the arterial speed. So, the arterial speeds that you would experience driving north or south, AM or PM, are gonna be roughly twenty-four to twenty-six miles per hour. And so then we take those and we analyze the operation of the intersection. So this first one is for the no-build, this is the, if we build it out to, um, the same exact way and kept the same lane configurations with the forecast travel, so. Green is good, that's basically everything from level of service C and up, the yellow and orange are bad. So, uh, that's where you are experiencing delays and issues with that intersection. And these intersections correspond, I know they're hard to see, and I will send them out, but basically it's saying the intersections of San Martin and Mitchell and things like that are not operating well. Here in the forecasted, and you'll notice that some of the bubbles disappeared, and the reason is that the intersections that disappeared are actually the intersections, um, removed as part of the frontage road removal. So, you can see here in the future build, um, proposed, you can see that everything is level of service C and above. So, you can see here, some zoomed in, so, here's the San Martin, you can see today is existing, there's PM peaks of level service D. Same thing with the no-build, but the future build is C or above. I'll kinda go through these ridgeways, basically unchanged from the way it is today, it operates very well. And then Mitchell actually drops down a little bit for the build, and that's partly because we're removing that frontage road, and so it takes the frontage road traffic off and puts it on that, but as you can see, it still meets that level of service C and above. So, as part of our traffic study, everybody wants to know about whether or not the intersection control evaluation, and so, as part of this, we evaluate stop-controlled intersections and seeing if they, um, are adequate, or if they need, um, traffic signals and/or roundabouts. Um, the way it is today, everything operates really well with the, the existing three traffic signals. Um, and then we did evaluate roundabouts at four of the intersections, so, um, the intersections of San Martin and Mitchell, which are the ones that are safety issues, have too much traffic and/or are too close to two eighteen to be able to, uh, risk backing up into, uh, two eighteen traffic. So, those were not considered as potential, um, roundabout opportunities. However, with the four here, all operate at level service A. However, they do introduce delays where there aren't previously delays on Laporte Road. So, if we were to select, um, Plymouth as a roundabout, it would actually slow down your main line, Laporte Road traffic. Um, Ridgway, however, would not because of the fact that it already has a traffic signal and already has delays. So, that only applies to intersections without traffic signals. Here we do propose, um, an alternate with a roundabout at the slip ramp. The benefits of here are the fact that it slows down the two eighteen traffic. I don't know about you, but there may be several people that come flying off of, um, two eighteen, I'm sure at forty-five mile per hour, but it may not slow down to the thirty-five mile per hour, and so, that roundabout will help force those drivers to transition to that slower speed, and help with the rear-ending crashes that we do see along that area, because what happens is people will come flying off, somebody in front of them will stop to turn and get rear-ended, so that'll help to lower that volume, or speed. Um, it also helps prevent the wrong-way movement that forces that turn off onto Byron and a number of other benefits. Any questions on the design? All right, funding, three-point, or thirty-one point three million is kinda the estimated, um, construction cost. Currently, we have, um, eight point zero three million in statewide swap funding through the MPO. Uh, we are submitting an additional application here in April. We've got TAP funding currently, and that is for a recreational trail from Shawless up to the KOA entrance. We've got, um, other opportunities, um, such as the infrastructure bill funding and a raise grant application for this year that we, um, may be looking at for additional opportunities. Project schedule, so, um, going forth from today, we are looking at having stakeholder meetings, again with, um, the businesses along the corridor, um, a public information meeting in March. And Phase One is scheduled to be designed this summer and fall, and construction's beginning as early as this fall and next summer. And then Phase Two would be designed, or completed design in 2024 with construction possibly beginning in 2024 and finishing in 2025. And sorry, you can see the limits here, I should have said them. But Phase One's limits will go from Shawless, the roundabout that's being constructed as part of the Shawless Road project, to about 900 feet north of Highway 20, which if you're familiar with it, is just south of the driveway for the substation there. And then it'll go from that point for Phase Two up to Grim. And that's, oh, if you want additional information about the project, we have, we will be posting this presentation up to the website and to the Facebook page. So those are opportunities. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out and I will get this out to you guys.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Quick, quick question. And once that construction of the roundabout at Shawless Hess LaPorte takes place, and then the section going north, how do we maintain access to Water Park Maintenance Drive and KOA? Because once that that roundabout goes in, that's going to be a nightmare for people with big motorhomes and pulling trailers behind their big motorhomes to navigate a detour. It's going to, it's going to send them all the way around crossroads to come back the other direction.
So we will actually stage this in order to maintain the KOA half at a time. So we will, in periods where we're constructing the part from the driveway here to south to the roundabout, that north leg of that roundabout is going to be closed. So that will restrict that traffic. There's, there's not a way, like on University, we maintained head-to-head traffic. With only two lanes of traffic, you don't have much room for opportunity to maintain traffic. So it will force that KOA traffic to go north when the south half is being constructed and then south when the...
I'm more than confused with what you're saying right now.
So, so basically, once you, you send traffic north when you're constructing the part south.
Yeah, the roundabout, you're saying.
So you'll close the roundabout, the north leg of it. You won't close the roundabout. Traffic will be maintained on Shawless, but the north leg of the roundabout will be closed.
So they'll, so they'll have to go all the way down to Hammond.
Yep.
And then come all the way around crossroads to come back.
Yep, or go out to 218 and then come back.
Well, generally, they come off of 218 and work their way back there. That's why I was wondering, I mean, when, because I live out there and I see that traffic all the time. But so then how do we maintain to keep the Water Park Maintenance Drive where they, they have hundreds of employees that are parked there? If we're going to the KOA and stopping and then going past that.
So you want to...
It's something we'll have to talk with, with the birches about. And it's, it may be a case where we'll have to make a temporary connection between their paved parking lot and their, and across the creek over to their employee parking lot. But we, those are things that we have to talk about yet with them.
Okay.
They do have an internal connection to their internal parking lot that their visitors use over to their staff. There is a drainage crossing that connects those two.
There is a drainage crossing that they use their maintenance vehicles, their lawnmowers to go across.
Yep.
And, and do you know when we're going to officially change the name to LaPorte Road? Because it's still has...
Well...
Still the signage isn't done.
Well, that, I would, I would ask Randy about that, but that's something that, that they know about and they'll be working on.
Because I was out there KOA last Thursday and they were still under the assumption that it was Hess.
No, it's, they, I have sent...
I know they've changed their, their addresses and their vendors and that, but they were still under the assumption that it was Hess Road.
No, we've, I, I've notified all the folks that are along Hess Road or formerly Hess Road of all that information, as well as traffic operations. It's just a matter of them getting out there to change the signs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So this is a major corridor in my ward, and I'm really thankful for all the work that you do. This question is actually for Noel. Noel, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of LaPorte Road is in one of the opportunity zones that we have, is that correct?
That is correct.
So I was just wondering if you have, and if not, that's perfectly fine, a conversation about its impact. I know we're trying to draw investment into that area about how this project will impact that. And if you've had that conversation, what are some of your thoughts? If not, then you don't have anything done.
We're definitely sharing the marketing materials, I guess, of this for the opportunity zone prospectus, as well as it's part of our grant writing for the RACE grant and all that, that this is an opportunity zone to try to get additional points there as well. But we are looking at the connection. We have been getting a lot of questions about the corridor. And an opportunity zone is a very interesting thing for a lot of developers.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the work you guys are doing towards this. This is a huge one for the city, for that corridor, for retail, for a lot for commercials. So thank you for all your efforts. Right, next we have a discussion about the aquatics. Mr. Mr. Hudding is, did you get out the blocks like that when you ran track back in school?
I was a little, I was a little faster. How'd you know I ran track?
I can tell.
You can, okay, great. So we're going to, we're going to switch from transportation to recreation. This is a joint work session for the aquatics master plan and the Gates Park master plan. I want to thank the leisure services commissioners who are sitting out here, as well as members of the focus group who have given us some valuable public input on what they would like to see at Gates Park in particular. So Gates Park and Burns Park have stood out for many, many years from our other parks as the anchors of our Waterloo Park system. And tonight, it's our opportunity to present to the council members and the commissioners the highlights of two master plans that ultimately we hope will lead to transforming both Gates and Burns Park. Both of these parks have shortcomings currently. And what spurred this entire discussion is the condition of our pools. Darren Barr with Ballard King is going to follow me up and lead us through this. But we also have Mark Kuiper and Ritlin Kuiper Associates here to present the Gates Park Master Plan. We do want to thank, as long as I've got the mic, those who have helped us with this. The Black Hawk County Gaming Association has helped us fund the Gates, or the Aquatics Master Plan. And for the Gates Park Master Plan, we've had help from Young Family Foundation, VGM Employees Group, and the 2021 RagBri Committee. So we got a lot of partners in this and it's, it's a very exciting project. So with that, I'm going to introduce Darren Barr and he'll lead us from here. Thanks, Darren.
Thanks, Paul. Everybody hearing me okay? Great. Myself and several others are going to speak this evening. We're going to try and be as, as good with your time as we can. But this might be a little bit like drinking from a fire hose. We're trying to stick with the water theme. But this is our agenda, what we're going to try and cover tonight. Just a little bit about the process, which Paul talked about. We're going to talk about the conditioning of the existing city facilities, sort of the process that we went through for this master plan, public input that we received in Burns Park, Gates Park, and then leave some time for questions and answers. So with that, this question wasn't really popular, but it was one that we asked at the very beginning of the processes. When I looked at Mark and Paul and the rest of the staff and said, you know, should we really be in the business of continuing to offer aquatics as a city function? And it was a pretty adamant response of yes. The city is very committed to offering the facilities and the programs. There's a really strong feeling that swimming, learning to swim, access to pools, pool use, aquatic use is a life skill. As a former competitive swimmer, I tend to lean that way. But as a consultant, I try and not wear that hat very often. The other real hallmark that the city staff talked about was the affordability. Whatever we went ahead and did, we needed to go ahead and improve our financial position and not try and subsidize the aquatics facilities to the extent that we are right now. But we also needed to make sure that our pools were accessible and affordable for, for all of our residents. So what we've done is we've gone through that whole process. We've talked with folks, we've asked a lot of questions. We've gone ahead and we've done this using statistical data and, and public input to try and make sure that we provide you with a plan that gives you direction into the future. It's not a set in stone plan. It has some movement to it. You have a very capable Parks and Recreation staff, so we didn't want to try and be heavy-handed with the plan. But at the same point, we wanted to provide some, some options and directions. Again, my name is Darren with Ballard King and Associates. We're a facility planning firm. Have Matt Freebie from Water Technology, who went ahead and did some of the physical assessments along with Mark from Ritlin Kuiper. So you're going to hear a little bit of each of us. So the existing conditions, and Matt's going to come up and talk about this here for us. But I've worked with Matt for about 15 years doing this, and this was the first time I've ever heard him make a statement like this. But when we were onsite in July, Paul and Mark were sitting down and we were talking. They said, so what's the, what's the condition of our existing pools? And Matt looks over at him and before I think he knew what he was saying. And at the same point, I think it's a good quote to share. He said, you know, if you called me when I was on the car ride home today and told me that the pools had failed, I wouldn't be surprised. So if you're going ahead and if you're talking about what kind of life expectancy do we have left in our two outdoor aquatics facilities, you're beyond it. You're beyond that life expectancy. And to that extent, there needs to be a little nod of the head or acknowledgement of the park staff that have kept the aquatics facilities up and running to this point. I think probably in the month of April, March, April, they probably do a little dance and say something, go pray or whatever they need to do to make sure that when they hit the start button on Memorial Day, that something starts. But they've done an extremely good job with these facilities. So Matt, do you want to come up and walk us through the existing conditions real fast?
Didn't know he was going to use that quote. Little frightening, but he's correct. That's not something that I say lightly. In fact, it is the first time I've had to say that. It has to do with the pool shells, but let's go through what we're looking at and what some of the conditions you have are. Quick question for you. How many of you have been out and used these pools? So you, you see what I see then and probably look at a bit of you gone into, say, the pump room or looked at some of those pieces. Anyway, if we can, going through the conditions, Burns Park, first of all, the two pools are basically the same age, the same type. They are Chester aluminum pools, which means they have a concrete floor. They have an aluminum wall system, which is buttress. In other words, there's a brace behind the wall panels that hold them in place. That's going to become important in a few minutes. General condition assessment is that they've been maintained, but they've been maintained over the past 10 to 20 years by gosh and by golly. That's not anything about the staff, it's what they've had to work with and some of the challenges they've had to work with. For instance, the images you're seeing of Burns here, you know, piping is no longer supported. The pipe supports have rusted away. You have movement in pipe that could fail. Your electrical boxes are rusted, not only on the exterior, but some of the, probably going to start seeing some arcing and some of that. So condition is just generally poor. Next slide. We got it, oh, boy, take care. In terms of... Good, good. The major thing with the pool shell is that you're starting to see bowing in the pool shell. And the bowing, most of the time when people think of, of pool shells like this, they think they're going to bow because of the water. Because the water weight is pushing against that buttress. In this instance, what you've had is subsidence in the, behind the pool wall. And so water has gotten in there, it's caused some of the soil to sink. And now the bow is actually into the pool itself, which means that those buttresses are no longer in compression, they're in tension, which is not how they're designed to be operating. What happens is, is that opens up, stuff with the pictures, but it opens up the joint between the deck and the pool wall, allowing more water to get in there, more water meets more subsidence of the soil behind it. More subsidence of the soil means it bows out a little bit more, which puts more tension on the system, eminently leading to failure. Next slide. And you can, whoops, I'm sorry. Gates, no, I'm sorry, I was, I was going to show something from the previous step, but that's okay. Gates, again, some of the conditions are, they're not cosmetic conditions. They aren't things that can just be polished or cleaned or, or buffed out and then repainted. It really is some, some serious conditions in terms of the deck, piping supports. The filters are outside, they're starting to unschool in terms of their fiberglass and things like that. So the, the condition is basically at the end of its useful life and should be planned accordingly. In summary, any questions? And I'm covering a lot real fast. Yeah. And some of the, I mean, some of the things are just odd. For instance, in the left-hand picture, the in-wall steps where people used to get out and the handrails are just not in the same spot. That's easy to fix, but it's just, there's just a couple of odd things like that. And then the, the deck, excuse me, the gutter profile where some of those panels are, have come loose. That's a safety concern and those things should, need to be maintained and kept up. And some of the parts are missing and things like that.
They may know steps weren't just because that's where you dive in.
I'm sorry?
Man.
Okay.
Terrible condition.
Thanks, Matt. To give you an idea of just the process that we've gone through, beyond the, and where these things sort of fall, as we started with our kickoff meeting and we've done market assessment data, we've done public input. Matt just talked about the onsite. We sort of bumped that to the front of the discussion because we felt like that sort of sets the baseline for the rest of the discussion. We've gone through another set of public input, facility recommendations, and we've gone through some operational planning. So one of the things that is important is to understand, whatever we do in the future, what kind of reality are we going to deal with in terms of revenue generation and cost centers and those types of things? So we are in the process of going ahead and, and putting the draft master plan together. When we started taking a look at the market, we went ahead and we looked at the city of Waterloo proper. We looked at a five-mile radius surrounding the Cedar Valley Sports Complex and then one-mile radius around each of the outdoor pools. You cannot go ahead and do a study like this and, and ignore Cedar Falls. You, you have to go ahead and at least acknowledge that it's there and acknowledge that a percentage of your population is going to go there to, to use facilities and services. So we didn't highlight that, but that is something that's there. There is a significant population. The diversity fluctuates based on the location, whether you're going ahead and looking at the full city or just the area surrounding Gates or the area surrounding Burns. The median age is lower. That goes ahead and points to families, it points to the university. It points to people who use pools, who are around water, who like to be around water. And the income fluctuates as well. And it's, it's always unfortunate when we go ahead and we bring that up, but it's the reality of the fact that somebody has to pay for the facility. Somebody has to pay to participate in the facility. So again, sort of like Cedar Falls being right to the west, we can't ignore the fact that people have to be able to access these facilities. One of the things that's pretty stark and pretty, pretty interesting when you look at it is the map on the right goes ahead and shows all the different pools that are around you. If it is a red dot, it's an indoor pool. If it's a blue dot, it's an outdoor pool. If you went back 40 or 50 years when these pools were first constructed, there would not be that many dots on the map. There would probably only be two. There would be the one at Gates and the one at Burns. So over time, your market for services, your market for participation in swimming in Cedar Falls, not in Cedar Falls, in Waterloo, has gone ahead and has decreased just because there's more pools out there. Now, some of those pools are very simple. It's a six-lane, 25-yard outdoor pool. But if people have the option of going ahead and sending their kid up the street on a bike with a dollar to get into the pool and maybe a dollar for a snack versus going ahead and driving the 15 to 20 minutes, they choose the first one more often than not. So we went ahead and took a look at that. So using some information from the National Sporting Goods Association, we were able to determine that approximately 16.1% of your population participates in swimming. When you go ahead and when you apply that to the population of age seven and over, that's about 10,000 people approximately. And those 10,000 people generate somewhere in the neighborhood of 447,000 pool visits over the course of a year. Those aren't specific to pools in Waterloo. They're not specific to Cedar Falls, they're not specific to those dots on the map. But if you went ahead and if you talked with people and talked about how many times they went to a pool over the course of the year and you aggregated those numbers, regardless if that pool was on an island in Hawaii, whether it was in the desert in Abu Dhabi, that's where the number would likely go ahead and come out to. So it's a significant number. Those age ranges that you see at the bottom on a national level, the highest rate of participation in swimming is from the 55 to 64 age group, followed by the 12 to 17, followed by the 7 to 11. So when you start talking about that lower median age and the presence of those populations, that sort of backs up that participation percentage. We went ahead and we did some, we did some fun, I call it fun, public input outside of the survey. We went ahead and we had a focus group meeting with lifeguards. Their requests were pretty simple. We'd really like a clock that worked at the pool. We'd like Wi-Fi. We would like somebody to make sure that there's not bees, lifeguard stands that didn't feel like they were going to fall over. So it took them about 20 minutes to get through that list before they started to dream. And then once they started to dream... And then once they started to dream a little bit, then we kind of had to pull back the reins and say, no, we can't put a sand volleyball court that floats in the middle of the pool. But anyways, they had fun with it, which was good. But it was also fun to go ahead and see and hear from them just some of the baseline things that we would assume a new facility has that would make their lives easier. So they're even, they're not struggling to the same degree that the Parks Department is to maintain the pools, but they're finding workarounds for some of the challenges that the facility presents itself. In addition to those, to that focus group, we did another series of focus groups and stakeholder meetings. We did an online survey. When we did that survey, we really focused on programs. We didn't ask people, do you want a 50-meter lane, or do you want a 25-yard lane? Or do you want a stationary wave or a speed slide or any of those kinds of things? We focused on programs that could take place at an aquatics facility. With the idea being that if we focus on those programs, we can go ahead and with our knowledge and with help from water technology, prescribe bodies of water that could accommodate those programs and that could differentiate the facility from what they are now. Key findings out of the survey, we had almost 1,000 people respond to the survey, which was very good. About 56% of those were residents. The top three aquatic programs that you went ahead and that you heard about was open swim and recreation swim. Number one, by far, no questions asked, followed by lifeguard training, which I was a little surprised about, right? We're going ahead and nationwide, it's sort of a lifeguard shortage right now. But everybody feels like we need to have a pool where we can train lifeguards. And all the aquatics professionals are saying, boy, I wish I had enough lifeguards to go ahead and run a full lifeguard class. So, but that's a legitimate concern. Followed by swim lessons, which the nice part about that is that aligned very, very closely with what we heard out of the department, that the offering swim lessons and teaching that life skill is a priority. We heard that if a facility could accommodate the programs that most, were most desired by respondents, 68, almost 69% of those folks said they would visit the pool at least on a weekly basis. There was only approximately 5.6% of respondents that said, regardless of what you put at the facility, I'm never going to, I'm not, never going to go there. We also found out that approximately 56, almost 57% said that the pool is a high to very high priority, a new pool. We didn't say a new pool where, we didn't say a new pool specific. We just said, how high of a priority is a pool that could accommodate the activities that are most important to you? Some of the biggest obstacles to aquatics that we heard from the, from the survey, cost to use, location, weather, hours of operation, availability and funding. And funding was funding for the operation, funding for the construction, those types of things. Those are responses from your residents and some outside. We also asked a question about what was missing from the park system. And this is not a definitive list, but if you're looking at themes, there didn't seem to be an order of priority in terms of what got top priority. Is it maintenance? Is it development? Those kinds of things. Outdoor basketball, fields, handball, ice skating, parks, pickleball, playgrounds. There was a little bit of a longer list. It was hard to narrow down exactly what that was. But those were just some of the things that, that were identified. We got to this point and we'd gone ahead and we'd done operation, we hadn't done operations. We reviewed operations, we reviewed the facilities, we'd done demographic work. We had done public input and we all sort of looked at each other around the table. And I can't remember if it was Mark or Paul, but somebody asked the question, have we heard enough from, from folks that are either current or future users of Gates Park? And we hadn't. We just hadn't. So we went ahead and in working with the Parks and Recreation Staff, we established, we went ahead and did a special focus group for Gates Park and Gates Park Pool. And I don't know, Felicia is going to come up and is going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we went ahead and we heard in that brainstorming session.
Good evening. Leisure Services took great time and great effort to actually talk to and listen to people that live here and use this park. And they were candid, sometimes difficult talks on, well, what's going to happen? What's happening with our pool? What are these, these next steps? And the cool part is, they got to, to first ask, what do you want? What do you want to see? In your dream scenario, what do you want, want to see? Now, we got awesome too, because one of our, our suggestions, what, what, what was a swim-up bar. But as we moved through what was necessary and then got to dream, the, we were brought back. And so once we had a sketch, then we were still involved in that part of the, the talk. The other piece is, the neighborhood association was engaged. And even when there were follow-up questions, we had private Zoom calls to go through and talk folks through this piece. There was great time and consideration on what Gates Park and Gates Pool means to this community. So there was great care. We have some people that were with our group, if you would wave, the Impact Team and Mr. Moses and Mr. Spencer all came and, and shared. We had about 10 more folks and other groups that I'm doing grant work with. I kind of shot, shot this in the, the air with them and just got the, the, the feedback. The biggest piece was having something kids could access and people would use and use a lot. And what we got back was pretty incredible. I think you, you, you all are going to be blown away too, like I was. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. So piggybacking on that, you know, some things that we heard out of there and I don't want to repeat, but you know, the idea that the park had been forgotten a little bit and the neighborhood around it, along with it. But that there needed to be a transformational investment in the park. And that that transformational investment was reflective of what the community wanted. It didn't have to be a traditional body of water, a traditional pool along those lines. So what we've gone ahead and what we've done, Ballard King has done, is we've gone ahead and we've made some recommendations. If you just look at statistics that are produced by the National Recreation and Park Association, so if you want to just approach it from a statistical perspective, it would tell you that the city of Waterloo population can support one indoor aquatic center, which you have, and about 1.5 outdoor aquatic facilities. Now, what's an outdoor aquatic facility? What does support mean? All those different kinds of things. This is just statistical data that they've collected over time. Some communities skew one way or the other. So if you look at it from that, but then we have all this other data that we've layered on top there as well. What we're talking about is that Burns Pool should be replaced in some way, shape or form, and we have some suggestions for that. We're also talking about Gates Park being master planned and that a spray pad of some variety be included in that master plan. When we look at Burns Park first, what we recommended was three separate bodies of water. We looked at a six-lane, 25-yard lap pool. We looked at a lazy river with the catch pool for a slide tower and then a zero-depth entry pool. The fun part about that is that you can have multiple programs and multiple activities going on at the same time. Right now, one body of water, there's not a lot of opportunity to do multiple activities. With this, we can have something going on in the current channel or lazy river, something in the zero-depth entry, something in the lap pool, all simultaneously. Let's go ahead and say that there's not enough lifeguards one evening. Well, we can close the lap pool and we can keep the zero-depth entry and the lazy river going. In the morning time, you can have people swimming laps and walking with the current channel. There's just a lot of opportunities for programs. We're also talking, you'd have to replace filtration and water treatment. It would increase the total water surface area. When we were onsite, it was kind of interesting. You'd go ahead and you'd see everyone gathered in the, in the shallow portion of the pool. Making sure that I'm not talking too much, which I am. But not a lot of people were using the deep water, but we were still including that because that's important for that lifeguard training, for some of that life skill stuff. But again, talking about some of the opportunities that are there. This is just a sketchup and it's overlaid on top of the current location that sort of talks about that, that zero-depth play pool, the current channel with the slide tower, one, there are two slides, one could come out into sort of a water flume, very shallow water, and the other one would go ahead and could be a tube slide that comes into the current channel. And then you see the, the lap pool off to the side. When we talked about a spray pad and we talked about one specific in the Gates location, you already have one in the city and it's already really popular. So I think that's an important statement to make, that you've already sort of established that there's a market for this type of facility in the community. And when we've gone ahead and we've done some research and we've been involved doing this across the community, spray pads have often been used to fill some equity gaps and to go ahead and create more access across communities. When they've done that, and how they do that is expanded hours. This is something that would be a park amenity, right? So it's available from the time the sun up, sun comes up to the time the sun comes down. If somebody wanted to go and play in the spray pad at 10:00 AM, unless there was maintenance being done or something else going on, that'd be a real possibility. Expanded operating season. In many cases, you're finding these that would open in this portion of the country. You'd have those up and running in early May and could potentially run all the way through the month of September. And what we were talking about is something that would be free to access. So Water Technology's gone ahead and provided us with some images of approximate size or scope of what we've been talking about. This gives you a schematic and then a side-by-side with the schematic drawing and then an overview. We're not just talking about something that would go ahead and would bubble up and sprays. It has some play features to it. We've seen these where they've gone ahead and they've been equipped with a theme of some variety. There's seating around the outside, there's shade around the outside. It is counterintuitive, but that's one of the number one things we hear when you talk about outdoor aquatics is we got to have ample shade. Not everybody likes to get burnt like I do. Some, some different pictures and different views of what you can go ahead and do. Find a lot of times pavilions are close by and people will say, well, I'm going to reserve a pavilion and I'm going to have my son or my daughter's 10th birthday party. And I'm willing to pay for that pavilion rental to do that. I always joke with people that the amount of money that I was willing to pay not to have the birthday party in my house was absurd and maybe obscene in some cases. And some more pictures that goes ahead and just really gives you an idea of what the character is. We're not suggesting that you're just rolling out a hose and a sprinkler and saying, hey, we have a spray pad. We're going ahead and we're thinking about a, a well-thought-out structure that is going to go ahead and enhance the rest of the park. And with enhancing the rest of Gates Park, the city went ahead and worked with, with Rittland and Kuiper and went ahead and had them do some master planning to give you a little idea of what some of that dream process was looking like around Gates. So Mark's going to walk us through that.
And again, if there are questions as we go, that would be great as the slides are up there. But I'm going to go through the images and the concepts. They are going to come at you kind of fast and I'll just try and illustrate or describe what's on the screen. So for the first plan, kind of an overview of the north end of Gates Park. And really, we'd be looking at the, the lower area on the south, bottom-left portion would be where the parking facility would be there. And then the existing parking facility for the pool would also be kind of redone. So those would be the parking support areas. Existing recreational trail that comes into the park from the northwest corner, from along Donald Street, that is maintained. We're actually connecting to that and creating access to the lower area where the splash pad and the inclusive playground would be located. And then that trail would connect to the upper area, which would then be a, an outdoor basketball area and also be a performance venue. There'd be opportunities for roller skating, to have outdoor concerts. And then that would also be a large picnic pavilion when it wasn't being used for one of those performances. And there'd be restroom support facilities for all those. So I'll kind of step through those as we go into the detailed plans for each. Looking at the top portion now, the, you see the basketball court facility. The performance pavilion would be in the, in the center of the screen, the larger structure. And the, the restroom would be adjacent to that, be accessible parking. It's kind of hard to visualize right now, but we're actually taking that area. And right now, where the pool is located is on a very high elevation. It's, it's actually about 15 feet above Donald Street. And so we're actually dropping that about eight feet. And by doing that, we actually create this amphitheater effect. So the idea would be, we would preserve the existing vegetation, these large, beautiful trees that are there. We would be able to preserve those because those are around the pool. But by pressing that area down, we actually create this, this amphitheater effect that not only is amazing for being in that space, but also provides the noise attenuation. It would be great for neighbors, be great for golfers. The idea is just to create an awesome outdoor venue, protected somewhat from the elements, providing some of that sound control, but also just being downright beautiful to be in. And we really just, I played in the Gates Park Youth Basketball League. And so the idea of being in this venue, playing in that, it makes me want to get my shoes back on, so.
We'll hold you to that.
Yeah, yeah. That won't be hard. So that's, that's kind of that space. And again, we can come back to these, but I don't want to, I'd love to spend more time on each one. But kind of a detailed view than if you're down on the court, what that would feel like being in that space. Our hope is that it would be lit and there'd be a good sound and lighting for that stage and that would just be a great space to be in. Then moving on to the lower level, I kind of had a preview of the, of this splash pad look. I'll kind of look at that as well as the inclusive playground. And those are both served off of that parking lot by an entry plaza. And then the idea would be that both of these areas then would be gated and fenced separately. So the, a parent could be in the splash pad area and, and they would be able to sit near the entrance to that and know when their child is, is in the splash pad area, know when they were going to leave and be given permission to do so. And then be able to go over to the inclusive playground and, and back and forth. But the idea is that you wouldn't be able to really get in there except for that one entry for, for both areas. The building in the middle would have four separate family restrooms, as well as the mechanical room that serves the pumped and filtration system for the spray pad. So the spray pad itself, the idea is that we'd have those, those spray features. And then there's actually a change in elevation to that. The hope would be, be able to actually have spray features slightly on an elevated plane and the water would be able to trickle down in sort of a really slow-moving stream that kids could play with and maybe even manipulate the water in that. Just having that change of grade and working it into the, working it into the grade, having the, the mounds behind it with the stone and the plants nearby, but, but also protecting those water areas from having that interaction with molds and that kind of thing. So working with the consultants to make that, make sure that those, those entities work well together. But that kind of gives a feel for entering into that space, the restroom building to the right, looking north. And then the inclusive playground, to, to go into a, just a bit of detail with it, the, the pathway that winds on the right-hand side of this, that kind of looks like a snake with a circle on the top, that's actually a, a slow-moving ramp that ascends six feet to the, to the top. And then that actually forms a bridge access to the top of the play structure. So the idea that somebody, any, anybody with any kind of physical disability would be able to access the coolest parts of this park. And that's part of the inclusivity, not, not just providing handicap access, which is kind of the way that accessibility starts. And I, and I think that's a great step. But the idea is to make each of these play elements separate features that parents, children of all abilities could be interacting with and having lots of, not only areas with physical challenge, but able, kids able to explore their physical, mental abilities at different, at different times, interacting with different kids. So each of these features was selected for, for having that multiple access, multiple for any, any of those types of needs. You have the, for instance, the Neos, I'll just point out just a couple of them, but the Neos 360 accessible, that's actually, it's actually an electronic game where there is a scoreboard and, and kids can interact with it by pressing buttons and sort of like the, the Simon game that some of us had when they're kind of my age, when you're following and remembering where things lit up and you have to go through that pattern and follow it, certain period of time, you have to follow that. That kind of, but there's, there's lots of different games with the ideas that you'd have, you'd have kids cheating, right? You'd have kids coordinating together to see how many, how fast three of them could do it versus two of them could do it, that kind of thing. But that's part of the, part of the design is that kids are actually interacting with this thing and it's, it's a cool experience for them. That's, that's just one of them. But like I said, I go, I go walk through all those. The custom play structure is kind of a concept, but that's, that's what that might look like. There's a tall, 18-foot-tall net climber, again, just lots of different abilities for kids to explore. As that path winds its way up, it goes past a large existing tree and we actually preserved the, the tree roots there and protected them from the berm that it works through. But it gave us an opportunity to create this play tunnel, which was the number 10. So the idea would be that, that area under the, underneath that tree would be a hidden area where a kid... could go in there and just have quiet space, pretend play. You could have pretend play over that bridge. And the idea of working this whole design into the existing grades, utilizing the existing trees that are there, really makes it personal and unique to its space. And that's really the part of any great design. It looks like it's been there a long time. It looks like it was designed with this intent. It's not a flat, it's not a flat plane that you could have rolled out from any factory. It's really unique to the site. Yeah, I'm super passionate about that, so I could talk about that for hours, but I'm not gonna do that. The area then connecting, I'll call this, this is really kind of a cool concept that's developed and I would say that Felicia's been a big brainchild behind this whole thing is the idea is not only making the connection, we see a recreational trail connection being huge between these vast spaces of Gates Park, right? Getting between them is really difficult. So making that recreational trail connection, part of cutting off that, all of that soil off of the top of where Gates Pool is right now is creates this opportunity to use that soil for something. And so not only to augment some of these constructions that we're proposing, but also creating actually earth sculptures and a prairie in this area. So the idea would be, this would be an area with rolling hills with prairie on it. And then our thinking is that at first, there might be mowed paths through this thing and some interpretive opportunities, not only for the nature aspect of it, but also for the African-American history that we want to interpret in this region, not only contextually with people that immigrated here and their stories, but just even some of the wider stories that are happening both now and have happened in the past. So this provides opportunities actually for a sculpture park. So we're calling this a sculpture park. The idea is that within these winding paths and the prairie, there'd be openings, there'd be opportunities for interpretive sculpture exhibits. And they could be of really any scale that you could imagine and obviously the fundraising and all that that goes into that. But the opportunities are there to really create a very unique venue, not only just making connective space, but actually making that something super unique to this area. And then we're connecting to just a little bit more detail. The existing soccer field actually has basically no drainage. We'd be looking at ways of trying to get that to drain properly and actually serve the soccer functions better than they do now. Likewise, the parking and everything, it's sort of a gravel lot, sort of, just hasn't had a lot of investment, but it does have a lot of use, particularly the Hispanic Soccer League uses that a lot. And so we really see this, we do need to relocate some playground equipment that's in the parking lot just north of here. And this provides an opportunity to have that playground and a shelter located adjacent to that soccer field, served by parking lots north and south. The idea would be that groups could have events and host events and actually have their own parking spaces and their own uses, renting out that shelter and using that space. And kind of talked about the sculpture park already, so I'll probably move beyond that. Going then to the south end of Gates, obviously that's had some recent improvements with the flood wall that was installed there. And part of this is recognizing the fact that the rest of that park really just needs a look because it used to be where the Gates Park Basketball League was, but it's not there now and it's not being used in that way. And it's really just not the aesthetic that the neighbors or even the region would like to have. So what we looked at here was a small organized parking lot. Again, trail connections, there's not currently a sidewalk from Fourth Street over to this space and we think that'd be really important for walkability to have a sidewalk in this side of the street. We would propose a series of mounds and trees through that area, again, utilizing the soil we brought from that north end where we cut that hill down. That provides us an opportunity to do some earth sculpting here and what that does is really effectively screen that wall from view. From the street, you just have the look of those rolling mounds and these trees and you wouldn't really even notice that the wall was there. We are bringing in, relocating the playground equipment out of the floodway area, keeping the existing shelter and adding another small one. And then the existing restroom has probably in about the same condition as the pools and so it needs to go away and looking at a new restroom there. And a half-court basketball with the idea that folks could be having a basketball tournament or some other event going on on the top of the hill on the north side, but kids still want to go from the neighborhood and shoot baskets. We'd have an opportunity to do that here. And then on the corner, then as you get, as it narrows down next to Fourth and Lester, it really, the wall is tallest there and it's really hard to hide with any kind of vegetation. So we thought, you know, this does provide us an opportunity. We need some signage, right? And so we looked at the existing conditions and we looked at what would we do if we transformed that using the signage approach that we've used elsewhere, like on University Avenue. And that really does provide an opportunity with the new sidewalk, with some trees, with the mounds hiding the wall for the rest of the park. On this end, we can actually dress that up, just put a facing on the wall. Right now, it's just, it's a good fabric to put something beautiful on it. That could be artwork, it could be going up Fourth Street, it could be some sort of art project, it could be more of this kind of veneer look. We just haven't explored what those options are, but we were asked to look at, take a stab at what a master plan would look like, sort of ignoring budget. Sorry, Michelle. Sort of trying to think about what kinds of amenities could Gates Park offer, given the amount of land that it is, given the importance that it's had historically, given the needs of the wider park system. What does the Waterloo Park system need? And so these are the kinds of things that we plugged in. Great inclusive playground, I'd put it up with anything around. The splash pad that's again providing accessibility, that basketball venue is gonna be amazing. And then the sculpture park, which would be totally unique. And then just fixing up things that just haven't been looked at and really bringing them up to the standards of Waterloo. I didn't. So the, sort of the blue oval around the basketball venue, the intent would be that we could have roller skating as part of the events that are held there. And that was just brought up again, I just want to acknowledge the focus group and their input on this process and their participation here shows their interest and passion for this park. They've been great to work with. I'm excited to do some of the hard work going forward of how are we gonna, we gotta make some priorities and decisions. How would this be phased? How would it be funded? How do we get boots on the ground to try and find money for this, that kind of thing? But yeah, that was part of their ideas too, was just having that roller skating and that basketball and the outdoor performance area. So I really appreciate their input.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President.
Looking at this area here, is that actually the area behind Chamberlains along these four streets?
It was the Chamberlain site, yes.
And that would be knocking down, you're saying, taking the soil off of the top of the Gates area there and transforming that area back.
That's right. And there has been done, there has been mitigation work done there already and we'd just be working with that.
Okay, I was just looking at the map and just trying to visualize it.
Yep, and hopefully taking down a lot of that chain link fence that doesn't need to be there anymore, some of it.
So that's maybe eight months of work in 40 minutes, 45 minutes? There's a lot there, obviously, and a lot to digest. The city has been great to work with, the focus groups have been great to work with, the community's been great to work with. They're very invested in their facilities. I think the Parks and Recreation Department and the city as a whole has done a nice job stewarding those interests and pushing those facilities forward. So if you guys have any questions or men or women have any questions, please let us know and we'll do our best to address those and I'll might look back to Mark and Matt to help me out if needs be.
What's a question?
Mr. Mayor? I don't necessarily have a question. I just want to say thank you for putting all that time and attention into that part of town and Gates. This is where I was raised. I was raised on East Fourth Street. So to see all of this done, well, beginning to get done, to beautify this part of the city is a great thing. So thank you to the focus groups and Felicia left, but thank you to her and all the time and attention that you all put into this. This looks great. I was excited over here.
I wasn't trying to get too excited about the facial expressions, but yeah, it was evident.
Got me excited.
And that's what I think we wanted to do. We're not here to tell you that it's not gonna come with some hard choices. And we were pretty upfront with the focus group about that as well, but we also, I think we're pretty open about, we want you to be at the table when those choices are being made. They've had a huge amount of input at this point. And I think it does speak to the city staff in that, you know, we had a point where our public input was done, right? We had done our focus groups, we'd done our open house, we'd done our survey, but we all looked at each other on the table and was like, we haven't heard enough from that community and we haven't heard enough from that neighborhood. And that's gonna become really important with whatever projects we move forward with the city as a whole and with that park. So I think that speaks to the interest in making sure that everyone's voices were heard and represented, so.
Mr. Mayor. To kind of piggyback on what Mia is saying, you know, I'm looking out here in the audience and I see some of the young people out here who have provided some input as far as what they want to see happen in their community. So thank you all out there for doing what you're doing to try and make that community what it needs to be.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So this is a question for Paul and I do want to thank all the folks who were involved in this process. I was very impressed. We talked a little bit about equity of access in terms of financials, but we also know that if we're going to have just one pool facility on the south side of town, we have to talk about equity of transportation. Is that something that will be coming up in the draft plan as well? Mr. Hudding?
We've had that discussion and we recognize that. We're actually currently working, and I'm gonna put Mark on the spot and have him come up, but we're currently working with Waterloo Schools to expand our regular lesson offerings to a broader net of people at Central. And that's a learn-to-swim program that's a very basic learn-to-swim program for people who don't know how to swim. But to answer your question more directly, we're planning on implementing some sort of a tram or trolley or whatever you want to call it to go between these two parks because we feel there are so many amenities at both of them, new amenities, that there's gonna be that cross utilization with everyone in the community and we'd like to be able to get kids from one side of the town to the other for, you know, the spray park is gonna be, look at the problems we've had with U.S. Banks parking lot because of our current spray park. It's a good problem, but I think it'll be better when we're able to expand it, to access that and the basketball courts and all the other things that were mentioned here. So Mark, do you want to just real briefly address the idea and what we're currently implementing and how the learn-to-swim for the North Waterloo community is being addressed now and how it might be moving forward?
We have a great partnership with Waterloo Schools where they'll bus kids to indoor aquatic facilities. And it's not like our typical learn-to-swim program where it's 10 days and you're getting hammered on strokes. It's basically drowning prevention. That's how we treat it is you're at Cedar River Park, you accidentally get in too far, how can you either get yourself back to shore or how can your buddy get out there and help you? We know we're not gonna teach them to be Olympic swimmers in a four-week program, but at least get them where they can be safe and at least be somewhat comfortable around the water, at least to save themselves. And I agree with Paul, I think the bus seemed a little weird when we didn't know what Gates would be and it felt like a one-way trip. But now it definitely feels like a two-way trip that kids could take and pretty much burn a whole day.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And would be for Paul or Mark, and the importance of the two-way trip is that it's my, when you look at your diagram for the Aquatic Center, we're gonna be taking out basketball courts.
Correct.
So we won't have basketball courts at Burns Park. The people, they're used a lot. And that way, if we had that transportation going both directions, kids that normally go to Burns Park or could get on that bus or that trolley or whatever and go over to the Gates Park area and use that entire facility, as well as people from the Gates Park area come over for either swim lessons or the Aquatic Center. So I think it's a win-win.
Just real briefly and then I'll sit down. Next steps, we always want to talk about next steps. We hope to have this master plan, both of them, taken to the Leisure Services Commission for endorsement. And then we would ask that this group endorse them however way, Mayor, you think is best to do it, whether it's a consensus or if you really want to have a resolution endorsing. But moving forward, when we get into fundraising, we need the full support of the Leisure Services Commission and most of the commissioners are out here today. We'll probably have something on our February agenda for at least discussion and maybe if we have the finished plan, I think the aquatics plan there and we may have by then. So we're looking for official endorsement. That's gonna help us moving forward to access the funding.
And I would think the funders want to know the council is 100% behind us. So we can sit down and talk about strategy. You, Kelly, Michelle and I and Mark, see how we want to package this to get it back before the council.
And one clarification, Joel is here from Building Maintenance and he's the guy, he's not, you wouldn't know this, but he's not with Parks and Recreation, he's with Building Maintenance and he's the pools guy and he's been the magician for a number of years. I'm done, thank you all.
Yeah, and you know, we talked about the usefulness of the pools, we are probably beyond, what, 10, 15 years of the usefulness. So Joel, they've had to do, work some miracles to even get it to where it's working. And I thought they could use that one ceiling, sealant that sticks like that. But I think where we miss out at, you know, structurally, the guts of the pool, you know, the molders and all those things that we can't see, that's in dire need right now. And so I appreciate the conversation. Paul can tell you, we've been taking a look at this Gates Master Plan for 10 years now, trying to get the pieces together to get to where we're at. So appreciate your level of communication with those in that area, like councilwoman, I grew up in that area. And so it's good to see everything that's taking place from the park that we're taking a look at to the most recent developments that's happening with Verden Creek and the new North Crossing. So this is an area that is really blossoming and blooming and this is going to do nothing but increase our chances for continued growth for the future. And last but not least, you know, I hate to use this cliche about building back better, but the reason I use that because we get in such a monotony of doing the things the same way we have always done them. But when you start to really take a deep dive into what the neighbors want, what the community want, there's tough decisions that are involved in it. But I think we've done our due diligence to try to gather all those thoughts and that the input so that we can make it something that is for today and not trying to fulfill what we did yesterday. So I'm appreciative of all the efforts and work that everyone has done to kind of put all the pieces together today.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions before we? All right.
I wasn't as excited by, as Neo was when I was putting the PowerPoint together, but I said to Paul and I said to Mark that, you know, when you do these all over the country, some of them you go ahead and as you're putting it together and you're part of a team that's putting it together and you're kind of looking through and you're like, you know, we might have missed a mark here, or we might have not had enough there. I never got that feeling when we were putting this together to go ahead and share with you tonight. It really felt like we checked all the boxes in terms of the different data points and the contacts within the community and the legwork that was done ahead of time. And that's a testament to your community and the involvement and the investment that they have. So it's been a pleasure working with you guys.
Well, data's good, but equity is important.
Yes, absolutely.
And we took an equitable lens on this project to give the community what they actually believe that they need. And that's the way that we need to be doing business all around. So thank you, appreciate you, and that is all. All right, great job. All right, you need to... Oh, you have to go where? No, I'm just...
That was me.
I'm gonna handle those down that way.
No, I don't.
Walk out the door.
But they'll do it anyway.
If you ask, I will, yeah.
Please.
Are we on the fifth floor? We're transitioning if you like.
Well, I like mine because I don't like going to the bottom every time I sit down.
Don't play hero. Your legs started going like this.
I believe.
Trying to sneak out.
Yeah. That happens to go. You know? In all honesty.
That's what you're supposed to do.
Are you Mr. Greider? Good, how are you?
We've ignored that area.
I don't know. I don't know. I'm here right now.
Yeah, they are. Please do. I have a drawer full of them, so.
Charger stations are pretty cool.
I got a. You do, but they also have keys because they won't be there if you don't come back. Why don't you come back? So I took one of my keys in.
Get ready right now.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I am so sorry to have to bring this up after the two really fun work sessions we already had today. But this is where we are. It's budget time. We got to do the fun stuff. Now I have a challenge at trying to keep everybody awake. But yeah, this is be our initial discussion of some of the budgetary things we're going to be getting into more and as the month goes on here. Unfortunately, this is pretty small, but the process, we tried to put together a timeline. I'm sorry, I put on my cheaters. We, we are deep in the budget process, um, capital improvements program. The partner requests were sent out in December. Hopefully Planning's going to have that ready. Oh, tomorrow? Tomorrow would be good. That is recorded, right? And I'm sure it will be very affordable. So we're working on that. Finance department has been working on personnel things since about November. And we developed our base personnel costs based on the new contracts. And we've given that to departments for review, tried to get their input and get those back. The contracts had a lot of interesting changes and pay methods, a lot of details this time. So we hope we've caught all those now. So we've worked on that using all the new contracts. Um, we have handed out information to all the departments, asking them to review it and especially review their revenues because even though we're sort of coming out of COVID, there's still COVID impacts and we do want to make sure that our revenue projections are realistic. And we also did provide an option for departments to provide other additional critical needs funding to us. So we, we are, we're still working with getting all that data put together with few pieces yet that we need. Um, and we're, one of the things we will need to talk about is how much this work, this group wants to participate by work sessions. We just need to get your feeling for that. And as those of you who have served on council will remember, we got a new requirement a couple of years ago that we now have to have two different budget hearings. Um, the first one, we just will be setting the maximum tax rate that we could potentially adopt at the second hearing. So that will be coming up. I would hope, Mayor and I discussed this today, we would hope to have a, that hearing. We want to have a meeting that sets the date of that hearing on February 15th. And then that hearing itself and this would be February 28th. And I'm really sorry, we tried to work with the regular council meeting schedule, but it just is difficult to get our 10-day publication periods in here and everything done to make that work. So we are going to have to have some different meeting dates. So we, I do always like to give staff and all of you as council and the public to submit additional funding requests. This is part of the dreaming thing that you saw going on earlier. So if you do have suggestions, and that would be either for things to cut money or not cut money. If you could provide those to me by February 7th, I, I need to get all those incorporated into the hearing that we have on February 28th. And that all has to go to the paper, has to be published for 10 days. So we need it very soon if you have speci- specific things you'd like to see us talk about. So that gets us through February. Then we're thinking council could adopt the second. You have to set a date of hearing for the second hearing after you've passed the first hearing. So we thought we would probably do that March 7th and likely have a budget hearing the week of March 24th. And I, I believe that's the week after spring break. That's why you're seeing a kind of space in there because I know the week of March 14th, people will probably want to be out of town. So if, if things go smoother, we could maybe have the hearing by March 22nd instead of March 24th, but just sometime that week. And another thing, we do have to have a bond hearing and approve at least a portion of the bond issue before these hearings can happen so that we can levy tax in the budget to repay the first year. So that's lengthy, but, um, please just go ahead and provide me feedback. If there are dates in there that don't work for any of you, let me know and we'll try to see what we can do with that. Any ideas or questions about the process at this point?
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. So Michelle, I know in previous years, we've had all of these meetings and everything else all week long and everything like that. I'm hearing you say that that is potentially not going to happen this time around, is that?
That will be up to you as a body. If you, we can have as many or as few meetings as you wish to. We, you know, sometimes we've had people that want to participate in a lot of the sausage making, as they call it. And, you know, I don't know if that provides value to you as a group.
Like I say, I've sat through a lot of those meetings and for me, I've, I'm a firm believer in the fewer the better.
I think yes. I think we, we will likely try to have budget work sessions maybe on council meeting days and then be special meetings. But I, I don't, unless someone has a desire to, we probably will not do lengthy conversations with each department or meet like every day. I know we had a year where we.
And one thing we're doing, going back and having the departments, uh, load their accomplishments and stuff on the website too. We used to, um, just have them kind of like the orientation that you guys have gone through. We used to do that during the council meetings and then have them upload, uh, what's going on. So what we, um, we'll, we'll try, maybe we won't schedule an hour for work session. When we have a long council days, maybe 25, 30 minutes, uh, to have some discussion. You know, still a little bit of ways to, way to go, um, and trying to digest all this information as well. So maybe we'll just add those. We don't want you to not have.
Right.
The information.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozzi.
Just a quick question, Michelle. I mean, we haven't gotten any information before today and you're asking us to have our suggestions in, in one week?
Yes.
Or, or our suggestions aren't going to be in?
Not if they are for a new type of program that we haven't done before. Or you want to add, I'm going to be really extreme and say, we want to add a seventh fire station. You know what? I mean, I'm talking big things that are different from what we had before. Because that's the way, and I know people in the public get frustrated with this, but the way the state has designed the budget process to work, you start with the highest you can have and you can always reduce it later. So that, unfortunately, that's what we've, we've got to do. And, you know, you do have professional staff that are all developing their budgets, but I just wanted to make sure to give people a vehicle if you have a specific need that you haven't talked to a department about.
Thank you.
That would be what we're talking about here. And I would assume those would be things you probably already know you're interested in, or at least that would be my. Anything else? If not, I think we'll dive into this and I will apologize for the, how small the print is. It's just really a lot of data to squeeze onto a slide. But I do think that this slide is really important to, it, it kind of tells the story, sets the table for where we're going as we come into the budget. As you all know, we've just gone through a new census count. And very much unfortunately, and I, I suspect some of this is that the census count maybe just isn't very accurate for Waterloo. But Waterloo, in the 2010 census, we were the fifth largest city by population in the state of Iowa. With the new 2020 census, we have unfortunately dropped to ninth. West Des Moines really jumped. They went to number six from number 10. Others are, and Ankeny and Ames, well, Ames is the same as it was before, but West Des Moines and Ankeny really jumped and pushed some others down. That's a pretty significant statistic, I think, for us. I also thought it might be interesting to see where our median income lies with these top 15 cities. And Waterloo is actually 13th in terms of our median income. And this is from 2019. That was the newest information that was available. Our taxable property valuation, which as y'all know, that's what our property value paycheck is based on. We are 13th with that. And you do need to keep in mind that does not include property value that's in TIF districts for any of these cities. Another, I decided to list the actual eight, 10 taxes on here because that's your general taxes that we get to live on. And we are actually 11th in the amount of eight, 10 taxes. But there are four cities who do not levy at that eight, 10 limit. That's the most we can levy for general taxes. And out of the top 15 cities, there are four that don't even need to do that much. So that's, that's an interesting statistic as well. And then unfortunately, our rate ranking, which I do think is misleading because property values factor in to the levy rate. And I do think property values in different cities, a similar property may be valued very differently in different locations. So that's why I personally think the rate is slightly misleading. But we are number one, unfortunately, in that category.
Mr. Mayor, real quick.
Yes, sir.
One thing that is really misleading in, in this is that there are a number of cities that use a portion of their local option sales tax to offset their taxes. And that makes us look that much worse because we've designated our tax usage for local option sales tax.
That, that is true. And I, we can provide some more details on that later. There are several cities that use half of their local option to provide what they call property tax relief or support their property tax budget. And that, you know, that can be as much as $5 million. It's, it's a large sum that other large cities are putting towards operating.
Yep. And there's about three, three, three areas. Uh, you just mentioned the usage of local option sales tax for property tax relief. Property values, uh, which we're taking a look right now out of, of 15, ours is around, uh, 13. And that's even opposed to some smaller cities, which is why you see the efforts to go into all parts of our community and begin to, uh, build up the housing stock to take a look at commercial opportunities. And so that work is taking place now. And number two on our strategic plan is the elevation of housing. Uh, so that's one thing that's going to help us over the course of the next eight years. Uh, the third one is taxable ag land. The city has an abundance of taxable ag land, which we know is taxed at a different rate as commercial or residential. So the more development, the more change, no offense to our farming or our ag population, but the more that we can take a look at, uh, those developments in those areas and increasing that tax base, uh, the better off we'll, we'll be as a community.
All right. So we will talk about our actual property value trends. And the first slide, next slide in your packet, it shows our 100% assessed value, which we have set another new record this year at 4.3 billion total. So that, that really is a positive thing. And it's difficult to say how much work goes into having that increase. But we do, we do have an increase this year. Of that, that, within the taxable property, you can see it is going up, but at a lower amount. And that's a lot to do with factors the state is applying to us, which we'll talk about a little bit in the next few slides.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Uh, just one quick question. Do we have a graph of this that maybe plots out five years for those properties that have tax abatements in the residential sector?
Planning has, we've worked on a schedule like that sometimes. I, I don't know that we've ever actually been able to tie it back to when it becomes taxable.
Okay.
When they get a building permit, they have to file an abatement application. So we have some information at that date. And we, there is a project out there if someone had a lot of time to, um, work at that. We do, and I'll show you in a little bit, it does seem that we are picking up some housing, new housing value this year, for example. We do, and I'll show you in a little bit, it does seem that we are picking up some housing, new housing value this year, for example.
Great, thank you.
We had a five point eight percent increase in our total assessed value this year and one point nine percent in the taxable value. TIF grew also, not nearly as much, up to three hundred and thirty nine million. So the next slide talks about our taxable. Whoops, I'm sorry, we're still on assessed value. Talking about just how it's broken down. Are we all residential? Are we all industrial? And we are just over half is residential property. The next category is our commercial. And then we've got utilities, ag lands, and industrial, very small portions of our total. And taxable, you can see it kind of follows the same category. Our residential again is the highest, even though residential property is only taxed at fifty four percent of its total value this year. And then commercial and the others are very small categories overall. Again, there's a lot of numbers on here. And so I I actually gave you another copy of this same slide that maybe is easier to read. This kind of breaks down the assessed value and I apologize for the color. Our copiers trying to give up the ghost, I think. But what's interesting about this chart is if you look at residential, which is the top line, and this is the hundred percent value, we had quite a bit of growth. But under the column that's equalization order, that is an estimate of the average increase for existing properties. I, it's disappointing, but the county software is unable to generate reports that would tell us this is how much value you're getting on new property for the first time, like the Kira's and Clara's. And this is how much existing values rose. So the the best thing we could come up with, they, they, Tim Jamison was very helpful and ran some reports for us. Our average assessed value increase on residential is about five point seven two percent. So that's where a portion of that increase is. But the number on here that's exciting to me is that we have an estimate again of thirty five million of new growth in residential.
Mr. Mayor. Michelle, this equalization order increase, is that because of what the state did?
That is really how assessment law is set by the state. So, and we're going to get to another slide that'll talk about this more in just a minute. But that is how the assessor has to value property. And and we'll talk a little bit more about that. So you can see we also had growth in here in our commercial properties of about eleven million.
Geez, sorry. I kind of dozed off there.
Here I thought he was excited about the increase and went to sleep.
I'm just kidding, I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna say.
Put your keys down.
No, you're in charge of.
We'll all wake up, we'll all wake up in a minute or two.
I'm just going to keep talking and make you guys sit here longer.
Sorry, I didn't mean to wake you all up.
You, you did, even me.
Got my heart pumping again.
Our industrial property values increased by about two point six. Multi residential actually fell by four million. And this is just in how much the assessor assessed those properties. Could be some changes in category in there, but I was surprised at that reduction. And then utilities, a pretty large increase at twenty million. And we had a nice increase in TIF of twenty two million. So our, so it is not that the city is not seeing real growth. We are seeing real growth. It, it just takes a lot of real growth to support us, put it that way. And this is the taxable side of that equation. We were just talking about the hundred percent. Now we go to the taxable percent. And unfortunately, the portion of your residential home that's taxable, fortunately or unfortunately, depending how you're looking at it, the rollback went down. So the portion of your home that's taxable fell. So your assessed value might have gone up five point seven two percent. Then the state said, oops, we're not, we don't want you to be able to have all that. So they brought it back down by four percent. So it really reduced the increase in taxable values of property.
So, Michelle, it's so for residential on the yellow side, that's two point six billion. The residential on the blue side for the taxable value is one point four billion. So is that fifty four percent of the?
It should be, yeah.
Okay. So that's fifty four percent you're talking about that we would be able to tax. Okay.
And as you remember, our property tax law now taxes commercial and industrial property at ninety percent. They have a ten percent rollback that started in about twenty thirteen. Multi residential was a new category and they're still working. Actually, it's supposed to, scheduled to go away completely in next fiscal year. So that multi residential will drop to be taxed the same as residential property.
What is it current, Mr. Mayor? What do they currently tax that?
This year it's down to about sixty three percent, I think. So it's, then it's going to drop another ten percent to get down to residential. So fortunately for Waterloo, as compared to maybe some of the college cities, we don't have a huge amount of multi residential. So it does impact us, but maybe not to the extent as it might some other areas. So that brings our total taxable property down to two point seven billion that we will, that we get to base our, our budget on. So because, and I only did this because we have some new council members. I thought maybe it merited a minute of talking about how those property values are set. City doesn't anything to do with that, of course. The county assessor sets them. And they're supposed to be based on property sales in that neighborhood. They call them map areas. So what they are required to do every other year is adjust every single home based on sales that have occurred in that area. And we know that we've heard from talking to the assessor that during COVID, while there weren't necessarily a large number of sales, the properties that sold tended to sell at high prices. And that's why you're seeing that five point seven two percent average increase in our assessed value. It's because of the sales that were happening. And then, as you know, the state decides what percentage of our properties are actually taxable. So that's what we call the rollback. You hear us talk about that a lot. And that dropped four percent. So that's the fifty four percent that Mary's referring to. And then all of us, cities, counties and schools, set our actual levy based, based on those factors. I think we've already talked pretty much about the rollback. But historically, the rollback has been shifting the property tax burden more to residential and away from commercial and industrial. But this year it kind of took a turn the other way. So over the last ten years, residential, the portion of your home that was taxable has risen by about two and a half percent. While commercial, we know, dropped ten percent. And the multi residential has dropped thirty six percent. And that's scheduled to drop more next year. So that's, that's a big difference. So our property tax levy trends, now this again is based on the rate. And I just picked up roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, I think, or a hundred to show you, we've, our rates have stayed. They bounce around a little bit, but they haven't moved a lot over, over time. And I, I do enjoy showing this slide because while it's a chart and it's kind of hard to read, I will, in general, it shows you that every type of property we have, if we adjusted our taxes to just inflation every year, they, the taxes would be higher. So we have kept each type of property tax for commercial. And industrial is the top two lines on this chart. They are the biggest winners in this. But, and also you can see that when commercials started dropping, that's the orange line falling below the kind of dark brown line. When that ten percent rollback came in, then that kept dropping. So our taxes still are less than. And inflation would make them out to be. Unbalanced, and I just always throw this in so you know our estimated, and the one, one that's important to me for budgeting is our, what we call our unassigned. And that is the green line. I'm sorry, blue line, can't read. That's as of June of twenty one, it's about eleven million dollars. And I know I get questions about why do we need that? Well, several reasons. We need that because we don't get our paycheck, like, if you will, every two weeks like our employees do. So we get our first half of the year, property taxes generally in October and November. So we, we need to be able to pay our employees for that three months before our paycheck starts coming in. And also, we have a number of grants and things that we will spend money during construction of a project or while things are going on. And we will not get reimbursed for that for several months later. So it, it takes some cash to do that. And also, it's always good to have a cushion for emergencies. We've, we've been fortunate with FEMA and even with COVID that we, we haven't had to dip into that too much. My target unassigned, where I'd like to get us, see us get to is at least thirteen and a half million. So we have a ways to go to get to where I'd like to see us be. But we have built up a healthy reserve, too. So there's always a balance there. A significant thing that has happened over the last ten years, it used to be that our property taxes, and this is just for the property tax supported budget. So that would be the general fund, the special library levy, debt service fund and pension fund. That used to be more of our, most of our support came from property taxes. But over the last ten years, that has changed and we're starting to see other types of revenue generating more and paying more of our budget burden than property taxes. And that's because we've adopted things like the utility franchise tax, for example, the gaming tax. Just we're being able to diversify that a little bit. And I put just one little slide in here just to remind us all how we spend our tax dollars. Fifty nine percent of it goes to personnel costs and that would include benefits. Then contracted services and commodities take up another quarter percent. You have one percent for other things and I seem to have lost the, there should be sixteen percent on here for debt service. I don't know where it disappeared to.
It does say excluding debt service.
Okay, it's the, it's the other slide, the other slide in. In that case, that personnel cost is low without debt service. So I will repair that for future one. And I do like to just throw in a number of full time equivalent employees we have. We are holding at about five hundred and eighteen. We did have a lot of vacancies, as I think you're probably aware, at the end of June of twenty twenty one, which is what I'm reporting here. So that is where we are.
Which if it, if it still stands, I think that number is probably second lowest out of the top ten largest cities as well.
Yes, and I think that, that kind of goes to our property values being thirteenth and some of the other statistics on that page number two that I showed you. That's really just the setting of the table that I wanted to accomplish tonight. I didn't think I'd be able to keep anyone awake any longer. So we'll stop there today and we'll be having more coming soon.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
Michelle. So if we wanted to add a s, one cent to our tax rate, what would that cost be? What would our, what would we need to generate?
Twenty two thousand dollars per million, I think. Well, might be twenty two thousand five, it's somewhere up there around there.
Okay, so I just, I mean, I want that out there. So as we're looking at, and if you want to increase anything, so for every twenty two thousand five hundred dollars that we want to increase our budget, that's adding one cent on to our tax rate. So, but we can also decrease it by saving twenty two thousand five hundred dollars in some spots as well.
Might be a little more than that. I get, I've got too many years in my head right now. That might have been last year.
I mean, I know.
It might be like twenty two seven now.
That's okay.
So, so what we, what we have to think about, so we take a look at our, our overall growth. And that's why I'm kind of hearing about we have this much taxable value and seeing how much that was from the year before. And so starting off this year, just like every city, we have to pay our, our increases with our salaries. And I can't remember if it was three percent or one point five. But so that already puts us about a million ish. You know, that we have to figure out how we need to make up somehow. There's other parts of the cost of doing business as well, because prices don't go down. They normally go up. And so even starting this year, we're probably close to two, three million dollars things that we need to take a look at to get us to be where we were at last year. So a lot of work. So we will start having those meetings and those conversations.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question, Michelle, how likely do you think it's gonna, that the state could actually eliminate local option sales tax? Because that's a proposal.
It is a proposal. We, we had a good conversation about that on our metro coalition call this morning. It's, it's definitely a possibility. The legislation today says that they intend to return that money back to the city. So what it would do, there were, I think they said there were like four hundred and some cities that do not have one. So it benefits all of them because they are going to get it. And they, I'm a little fuzzy about when this would come into play for us. Since we have an existing revenue purpose statement that, that's in effect today, I think that we may be able to preserve our use or be required to preserve our use, however you want to look at that, probably until our referendum language expires. And after that, their idea is that we would be required to put fifty percent of it to property tax relief, which is interesting because anything we do that we pay for with that, I, I feel is property tax relief. But that, so they believe we will actually see growth. It is, you know, it's difficult for us probably to have a lot of trust in them because the fear is that they might change that in the future. You know, they might say now you can keep all your money. We don't know if they'll always do that.
It's the same thing with backfill.
Correct. I did, I have not talked to you about that yet either, but this is your number one of us having a reduction in our backfill replacement.
Was this farther behind.
Yes, and over the next eight years, that will, for us, that will be phased out completely. So yes, even though the state has lots of extra money, they're still choosing to remove that from the cities.
I'm generally concerned that the large amount of money in backfill and then our local option sales tax. Because our, you know, we're looking at what, ten million, nine to ten million in local option sales tax that we, that we use it all.
Of course we do, yes.
You know, and then, and if we lost our backfill, I, we'd be sitting in a totally different situation than we are right now.
And so what happens for all of you, you know, some of our legislators go to the public and say, hey, public's like, we want to reduce taxes. We want taxes to go down. So they come up with strategies where on the state level, they can reduce the tax asking, but it puts a, a burden on the local municipalities because we have to make that money up. So we get a lot of the blame for the increases when things are outside of our control and we have to make those up. Like you hear a conversation about the backfill and that was an initiative that was trying to decrease. Was it the overall commercial business tax?
Yes.
And so that was reduced. And there was a promise that it would always be backfilled because they were thinking that this initiative was going to be so great that the overall local communities would grow by what, four percent at least? Well, what happened, did they grow a, a percent? Maybe a percent or the growth wasn't as much as they thought it would be. So now they're like, okay, it's time to take this away. We didn't make that agreement with you. And so for us, that equates to about, over the course of the next five or six years, about what, one point two million or less than that?
One point eight is where we started, down to about one point five this year. And we're going to lose about three hundred thousand a year.
And so they turn around and say, this is the local community. No, this is something that the legislature did at the time, you know, party alike. But they've decided to start cutting that now. So incrementally, we're seeing changes like Mr. Bozen indicated. So it's kind of like, we'll. So it's kind of like, we'll take it away at the state level and then expect the local municipalities to, to fix the problem.
So if you take away three hundred thousand dollars, that's twelve, twelve cents on the levy. I mean.
And then not to mention.
That's realization there.
Not to mention multifamily and some other areas as well. So, um, but that's why we're elected to, uh, take some of those lemons and make some lemonade. Yeah, so.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right, we will continue to have these conversations. So thank you all.
Oh, we have one more?
Losing my battery here.
I guess continuing with the theme of maybe not as exciting as a pool or a park or in your metro corridor. I had called last week for a task force on gun violence. We have seen an unfortunate death in our community this year. We know from the Courier article, we had four last year. We had nine gun deaths the year before that. The number has fluctuated between the low and high single digits, putting us slightly above a city of, of our average. That being said, in addition to the deaths, we, we have also had shootings, including one that was in my ward over the weekend. And I, I want to be clear that my call for this task force is not because I do not believe that the Waterloo PD is up for the job. I, I one hundred and ten percent respect the work that the men and women of our police department do. And I believe that law enforcement certainly needs to have a seat at the table when we're talking about this. And I know that we have programs that are working on and have been successful at getting a, a lot of firearms off of the street. And that is a commendation to our department. However, there is so much that goes on before a person ever pulls a trigger that I think we need to look at the ecosystem that makes that an acceptable option to resolve whether it is an argument, whether it is something that some person thinks is, is fun or worthwhile doing. I think that we need to look at this issue holistically. Because the burden cannot fall solely to the police department to solve it after the gun has been fired. I would vastly prefer that the gun is never fired in the first place. I understand that that is a big ask. I am not sitting up here pretending to be Don Quijote de la Mancha and tilting out windmills. But I think it is incredibly important for us as a, a community to have these conversations, regardless of the individuals who have died, people have died. Regardless of whether or not we want to argue that the numbers are so small or so big or whatever, they exist in our community. And maybe I am a bleeding heart liberal, and I'm fine with that because I am. But I firmly believe that no parent should bury their child because of gun violence. I believe that no spouse should ever have to deal with domestic abuse that involves a gun. I do not believe that any child sitting in any of our classrooms tomorrow dreams of dying in a parking lot because of an argument. So I have put this task force resolution out there. I am not beholden to anything other than I believe that it is incredibly important that we, as elected officials with voices and spotlights, shine that light on this issue and start to come up with something. I am not saying, nor do I believe, that we will solve this issue in six months, that we will solve it in a year. But what I am saying is that there is an immense amount of power in this room to have real and difficult conversations in our community, amongst our community, about what this means. So this resolution is a starting point. I am more than happy to take suggestions. But at the end of the day, my goal is that Waterloo is a safe and prosperous community, regardless of what street you grow up on, regardless of your skin color, regardless of your socioeconomic status. And I think that we need to have that discussion.
Mr., Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that I, I want to commend Councilman Greider for what he's trying to do. But one of the things that I believe each and every one of us council members received was a letter from a gentleman who started talking about black-on-black crime and things like that. And that's not what this is about. This is about our community and the things that are going on in it. So it's just a matter of, that was something that really disturbed me when I saw that. That's not what this is about. It's not about any race or any particular group of individuals. This is about addressing the systemic things that are going on in our community for everyone, not just people of a certain color. And I just want to make that specifically clear so that we don't start going down that road.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Will this task force, Mr. Greider, address funding for some of, with, with your recommendations?
I, I believe that, that thing should be on the table. I think that the policies that they bring forth, they should, they should talk about, if it's going to cost money, we need to know about that. I understand that obviously we're getting from Michelle that we want all budget items in by the seventh. Obviously, we know that that won't happen given the timeline of this, of this task force. But if they can identify things that are going to cost money, we can, we can work on that in future budgets. I, I get that, that there will be additional expenses. But I also know that having police and fire and EMS respond to these situations is also expensive. If we, if we want to ignore, which I don't think we can ever do, the purely human aspect of the fact that someone dies at the hands of violence. It is expensive. Uh, and Major Leipold and Chief Trier can, can tell us, it is expensive to send our folks out there to deal with this situation. And that's if it's done. That's not if it's an ongoing, continuing situation. So yes, I believe that we need to look at, I think everything needs to be on the table.
One other question, I appreciate that, but one other question. I mean, but years ago, I, I attended for the city urban potential. And that was with, with, with Ms. Williams and with C.T. Vivian. And one of the things that struck me, struck a chord with me is the fact that, as they were talking about the violence in certain generations, and they said, if we want to make a change, it's a long-term change and we have to address the systemic problems from birth to kindergarten. And to get these kids on the right foot, to get them, to get them, you know, to make sure when they, when they hit preschool and kindergarten, that, that the literacy is, is there and the, and the rate is higher and then they're in stable households. And we give the parents and the people the tools to bring their kids up in stable households, to, to set them at the right path to, to stem this violence as it, as, as they progress out through the ages. Is your task force gonna be looking at anything like that?
Yes, I, I absolutely do because it, it is a system. And, and I don't think all of the solutions that this task force will suggest are even necessarily things that we can do. They may suggest combining or, or having community groups that already exist come together. They might talk to the schools. They might begin talking to our prenatal and neonatal and birth centers at our hospitals and talking to those folks and, and having those conversations. I'm not saying that, that this city by itself is going to solve all of these problems because we didn't create all of these problems. There, there are lots of systems in place, but, and that's why I tried to get as broad a spectrum on this task force as possible because we are going to need every partner rowing this boat to a better tomorrow. And that includes entities that, that are not here in this room right now, but certainly have a stake, whether it's the classroom or small businesses or large businesses or religious leaders. We all have a stake. So, so some of these policies, yes, will be for us, what we can do. But some of them I certainly believe are going to have, be community focused and potentially other entity focused as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I think I'd like to take that final point that Mr. Greider pointed out. But this is going to be, it needs to be community focused. And I believe that the entire crux of this, this task force, I, I, I think Ms. Water and I talked about this beforehand. Task force maybe seems like an aggressive term. So maybe we can change that title, focus group or something that is more positive. Talking about the opportunities, because we have a lot of these organizations that are already in the community trying to do these things, maybe it's our job as a city to help bring these people together. And then reveal the opportunities that are already in our neighborhoods, that are already present. Bring our neighborhood associations together, bring our church leaders together, bring our teachers together. Bring the police department to let us know where those areas are, that those particular people could focus and use that community sentiment to help these areas together as a singular unit. I'd like to see this group focus more on that aspect than then, and not saying that you are focusing on this, but then a stick. I've talked about that with other staff members here at the city. You know, sweets work better than beating. So maybe if we're approaching this from the perspective of getting these community groups together so they can work as a whole, kind of like what we did from an infrastructure perspective with Walnut. And zoning on these areas, make sure that we're focusing on the positives and what these people can do and what help that they have already provided through federal government assistance to community development or other things that we already do in the city or that the community does. I'd like that approach. And that's why I'm so thankful that you're so open to interpretation on how this moves forward.
Yeah, I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm perfectly fine if we want to change it to the Commission on Better Tomorrows or, or whatever we want to call it. Again, I, I am open. I, I was elected and until I am no longer elected, my job is to, is to solve problems. And if task force is a term that, that we don't like or if we want to change it, I'm more than happy to take any and all edits that folks have. I'm more than willing to have those conversations. I, I just want it to be better. So I, I'm perfectly fine with, with switching the focus from the pre, the negative of gun violence to the positive of what it can be, keeping in with the other things that we have done, whether it's the twenty thirty plan and, and the other positive aspects that we've seen. I am perfectly fine with that. I would ask if folks have those particular types of edits or changes in whether it's council members or the community, that they can email me, they can call me, they can text me. Because I do want to get this going because I think that every day that we don't work, every day that we don't have this as one of our focuses is another day where someone is going to get a phone call that they don't want. And so especially because we do have to look at this systemically, these are things that are going to be years down the road in terms of solution. So I am perfectly fine with whatever edits anyone wants to send my way.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So just want to get an idea, what would be the next steps of this process to move forward? From an agenda standpoint, at least.
You know, you probably want to, uh, work with Mr. Greider for any types of edits, name changes, send him, send him your suggestions. I guess this goes on the agenda. Probably first, we probably need to talk about processes a little bit and beats and those types of things, which we hadn't had a chance to, and then bring it forth to the council for you to vote on. But also thinking about the timeline and the process. I know it's nine months. It's a heavy undertaking for that timeframe. So we just need to have some conversation about, about the mechanics of leading this initiative.
Mr. Mayor. Did I, did I beat you or did you beat me? Yeah, I just want to piggyback what Mr. Charles and Mr. Greider said. The task force, the, the reason for it, I understand. However, I do agree with changing it to more of a focus group so that we can figure out what programs we already have in Waterloo that do cater to at-risk youth and families that need help and figure out if there's a way that we can better support them and their mission. And then see how far that gets us because a lot of the people that are doing the crime, they either don't have a choice or they don't care about their own lives to have a choice or they haven't thought that far down the road of what am I gonna do after this? And so if we can get them to take a pause and think about their life and how their purpose can help Waterloo grow, especially with the, the vision plan that we're already thinking about and all of these great things that we're doing to add on to our city. And if we can put them in a position to help us add on to the city and help us be better, I think, I think that would bring some pretty good wins. So, um, Councilman Greider, whatever you need from me, since I know, uh, Mr. Amos, me and you, we got a heavy load to take care of with our wards being the primary of these issues. We, we got a lot of work to do. And so we just gotta get on in there and get it done.
So I would probably say if you have suggestions, email them to Jonathan directly. Don't, you know, five people on a thing that's not kosher right now. So if you have suggestions, names, titles, uh, hit them with Jonathan and communicate about them.
Question to adjourn?
Second.
Those have been made second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
We adjourn.